Well, I will go ahead and turn it over to whoever needs to be turned over to if it hasn't been already.
That would be Chief Royce and I'll make a quick handoff to him.
All right. Thanks, Mike. Madam Mayor's Commissioners, I'd like to thank you for taking time out of your day today. Slade Fire Department has been performing what we call performance analysis since 2009. Our accreditation requires us to give some type of an annual report to the governing body either in written form, and we've chose to do it a little bit one step further in a presentation form so that that would enable some questions and interaction than just looking at a bunch of numbers if they don't make sense to you. Please feel free to ask any questions as we go through this. I don't forsake it taking the entire time. We kind of were running behind last year. I presented this in the CIM last year. We didn't get really a chance due to the COVID to make a presentation, so we're catching up. Usually what the process is, is one of the station captains will would present and collect all this information. However, due to the issues we've had this year, I told them I'd go ahead and take care of it this time. So please feel free to ask any questions. I'll give just a really quick overview real quick, then we'll switch to the PowerPoint which is in your handouts also. Slade Fire Department currently staffs four engines and four ambulances, one heavy rescue and one ladder truck, as well as one battalion chief and one medical officer, all on 24-hour shifts. That's a total of a minimum daily staffing of 25 per shift. The department also has two administrative assistants, three chief officers and two inspectors and a mechanic that work on a 40-hour work week. As you might imagine, COVID had quite a direct impact on our operations this past year. You'll notice a lot of our numbers may be a little bit lower than they were in normal times. Usually we anticipate a 3% to 5% increase in 911 volume as well as inter-facility transfers, but obviously there were some things that happened this past year. I will mention this. One of the things that we did do is we made a policy decision not to perform any inter-facility transfers on COVID-positive patients where COVID was their main medical condition. We continued to transfer, obviously, emergency life-threatening situations, and if they happen to be positive, so be it. But if COVID was their only clinical sign, we informed the hospital that they would have to make other arrangements to do those inter-facility transfers. And looking back, that was a very good decision on our part and Chief Pearson's part in that it really did prevent any, I won't say any, but a lot of our people from being taken out of work by being positive. As a matter of fact, we had a total of seven total personnel who missed work due to being positive COVID. Two were inspectors, five were operations personnel, and we cannot go back and trace that they got that from a patient. It was usually a family member or a child that they got down. So I feel extremely fortunate that something didn't come through and wipe us out. There were maybe heard of poor stories of other departments just taking out entire stations or shifts. We're very, very fortunate. With that, if I'll ask Jacob to start the PowerPoint, we'll move forward. Okay, you can move to the next, please. This is our mission statement. Respond quickly, perform professionally, save lives and property, be caring, compassionate to all, make sure everybody goes home. Okay? We're considered an all-hazards fire department, which basically means we can handle any emergency hazard there is, whether it be, we're an ALS fire department, advanced life support, which means we do transport patients, obviously. We can also do aircraft firefighting. We can do hazardous material response as well as technical rescue. And in fact, we do have two teams, both on Kansas Regional Response, which is run by the Kansas State Fire Marshal's Office for both the 11 north-central counties in Kansas, that we would respond in a hazardous material situation or technical rescue. Technical rescue would be building collapses, trench rescues, high-angle rescues off of a high building, things like that.
Grain elevator?
Grain elevator, yeah. Water tower. We don't, we do, we don't do underwater, any type of underwater search and rescue, but we do do above water or surface water such as swift water rescues like flooding. And then we also have a prevention and education section headed by the Fire Marshal. We also have a canine search and rescue program along with the arson detection dog. We're the only department in the state that has a dual-purpose canine, which is Hoke. He can do search and rescue and arson. He's been deployed to North Carolina in 2019, I believe, and some of our swift water people went to Houston back in 2018. So we have gone outside the state with other members from Kansas. Okay, Jacob? The department is broken down into four divisions: fire administration, prevention, fire suppression, and then the EMS division. Those are all headed up by a chief officer. Currently, and right now, we are full on FTEs. We are at maximum staffing, which is 83 shift personnel and nine staff personnel for a total of 92. It's been a while since we got back up to full staffing. This is just some information from the, what the Fire Marshal's Office is responsible for. They perform prevention and education. So be it, education was kind of curtailed with COVID this year. Commercial building inspections, plans review fire systems, testing in fire systems, fire investigations. The plans review, Troy Long is our Fire Marshal, he's been extremely busy, obviously, with the additions at Schwan and Great Plains are really keeping him busy as some of the other departments here in the city are. Okay? Jacob? They did probably take the hardest hit within our division or within our department this year from COVID. However, it did bring to light the fact that every single member of our department, except for the administrative assistants, all the chief officers, all the inspectors, including Fire Marshal Long, continue to maintain their medical certifications and their physical certifications, and we were able to use one of our inspectors and put him back out onto the, onto a truck, so to speak. All of our chief officers have the capability that in a bind, we can actually staff any apparatus or ambulances, which is a huge advantage on certain situations and assists with overtime. Even our emergency vehicle technician, Casey Stevenson, is certified as an EMT and a firefighter too. And if worse comes to worse, we could utilize him in those positions, and he has worked in those positions for us. Inspections were down a little bit, obviously, with a lot of the places being closed. Our part-time inspector, Roger Newell, was one of the unfortunate people that were laid off. So we only got to about 50% of our commercial inspections this year. Also, the next one was new builds. I'm sorry, Jacob, if you would go to the next one. Commercial constructions, obviously, was down again to COVID. A lot of people weren't building everything. A lot of stuff was on hold, as you can see. Jacob, next one. We had zero fire deaths last year. We had eight fire injuries, and those were, obviously, you can't get any lower than zero. The last time we had zero was in 2017, I believe. The fire injuries, none of them were critical. So despite not being able to get out and do a good education program, people were very cognizant of fire safety. Okay, Jacob? I will draw your attention to two of the programs that Fire Marshal Long instigated in early last year, really towards the end of 19, most of 20, and we've really seen some very good success with these. The first being Compliance Engine, which was the third-party testing company. That program continues to identify unlicensed city contractors that were coming into the city and continue to come into the city that try to perform inspections and maintenance on our fire systems. And that catches them because they have to file with Compliance Engine, and if they're not properly licensed, properly licensed by the city, we have to inform them that they cannot do business here until they do achieve those licenses. That's also freed up valuable reinspection time by Troy and his inspectors. And we have, this is a thing that we've noticed too, is it assures the inspections and testings are being done. And as an example of that, in 2020, we had 107 system alarms alarms that we had to respond to that were, ended up being malfunctions from some type of a mechanical issue. So that was 107 times that the alarm would come in, we would respond, fire engines, and it ended up being a system malfunction due to mechanical. This year, we've had six so far. So this Compliance Engine has caught the maintenance that was not being done on a lot of these fire systems and is making sure that that's being done, which is in turn saving us from going out on false alarms, freeing up our resources for emergencies. The other situation is last year, we moved to an in-house fire alarm registration. We had, we were paying a third-party company, 22% was their fee out of the alarm fee to manage it for us. We found we could do it in-house, better savings in that. And plus, the information we were getting is more reliable, and we can kind of stay on top of it. We felt as the company was not performing up to what they said they would do, and therefore, we were not getting accurate information. And that has shown a dramatic increase in registrations as required because we can kind of stay on them a little bit more that they have to, and that's by ordinance that I think was passed in 2015 or 16. Okay, Jacob? Okay, you can move on to the next. Now, this graph shows a five-year total of incidents, and there's going to be, not only did COVID play into this, but the last two years, we were in the middle of, which was one of our goals, is to get on a single reporting system. And that's why you're going to see some discrepancies in these numbers. Before 2019, in fact, in 2019, we were operating in three separate reporting systems, which was a nightmare. There were a lot of duplication. They didn't talk to each other. We moved over to what's, the company's called Image Trend, and they handle both fire and EMS. And 2020 was our first full year of operating under one reporting system. And again, COVID had a little bit to do with it, but you'll notice some of the numbers were down because of the duplication that was being done from 2018 on with firehouse and EMS charts. And in 2019, we had three types of systems that we tried to get them all into one. And it took, we knew we were going to have a year of 2019 where the data was going to be a little bit skewed, a little bit. And this was the first year. We're very happy with it. It's been the thing we've done. It's given us a true, true indication of our workload and alarm load. Okay, Jacob, thank you. EMS continues to be our most common call for call volume. We're at about 87.4%. As you can see, the total, 8,039 alarms, 6,894 were EMS incidents. I broke down the top, about the top six or eight. Sick persons were up tremendously again, obviously, due to the COVID issues. Falls continue to be one of our highest EMS call volumes. Inter-facility transfers were down, and a lot of that probably had to do with some of the policy that we decided not to perform those transfers on COVID-positive patients. And the other fact was during the height of most of the COVID, other facilities weren't accepting transfers. Slade Regional was trying to get to transfer, and Wichita was full, Topeka was full, Kansas City was full one day and then opened up, and then they'd be full again. So that was, that was more than likely the reason for our transfers to be down. Usually, they're over, a little bit over 400. Okay? Just the next numbers here are actual fire calls. These are the top, top fire calls. Fire incidents cover everything from grass fires to structure fires to car fires, RV fires. It's kind of a, we operate under what's known as the National Incident Fire Reporting System. We don't determine how to classify those reports. The federal government does. False alarms, again, were down. Good intent means everything, anything from, somebody drives by and sees some smoke coming from behind a house or something. Basically, it entails responding to the call and not really finding any type of a hazard or emergency. Patient assists, same thing. We get a lot of patient assists where people will call in for, a lot of times, it's assisting people, believe it or not, back into bed or invalid-type people on uncertain situations where we actually don't transport. Hazardous condition could mean anything from a gas spill to an electrical line down, and then obviously severe weather and hazmat were negligible in our responses for fire. Okay, thanks. Jacob? And this, I just wanted to give you a little indication. You could literally see how the percentages went down. This is a year-to-year comparison. They started dropping, obviously, in March when things really started hitting, and this is for EMS calls only. They started kind of dropping in March, in April, May, June, and then they were starting to uptick a little bit from September on and starting to kind of rebound from that. Lot of, obviously, a lot of reasons why a lot of people thought that people didn't want to go to the hospital, whether they should have, things they normally would have called in for. Either they realized weren't that serious or weren't a true emergency, or they did not want to expose themselves to the hospital for any COVID-related issues. Found that interesting. They've started upticking just a little bit, back to normal. Okay, Jacob? This is just a quick snapshot of this. This doesn't mean only these stations responded this many times a day. This, I broke this down to show you the number of calls in that station's area. We many times respond multiple stations on certain incidents, but I wanted to let you see, and I did this last year so you could kind of see the differences, that as a matter of fact, at Station 1, there were seven and a half calls in their first response area, which obviously includes north and downtown area, which is where you would imagine them with the population issues and so forth. So that just boils out to about 23 calls per shift, which is normally about 26 or 27 is what we'd been seeing last year. So again, we saw a downturn in total numbers, obviously, related to the COVID issue. Okay, Jacob? Gives you a quick overview of our training division. We have a chief of training. This is important, as a matter of fact, for a lot of reasons. ISO just called me Friday, as a matter of fact. We're due for our five-year re-evaluation or reinspection will occur in March. We're currently an ISO 2 rated department, which is in the top 4% of all departments of 39,416. There's about 1,600 ISO 2s, and then ISO 1 is obviously the highest, and there's only 324 of those in the country. So we don't anticipate any issues, but it's very important when they come out because, Jacob, you can move to the next one. They look at things. They audit us for certain types of training verification and documentation, and this is just an example of some of the mandatory ISO hours that are required per year, per department member. You can see the different headings and different subtitles, and then the amount of hours needed per member, both on the EMS side and on the fire side. And when they come out in March, they'll be looking at that. ISO looks at three different things. They look at fire department operations. They look at water supply systems in the disbursements or distributions system that the city has, and they look at the 911 communication center. And then of those three, they're each weighted a certain amount, and of those three areas, a score is obtained based on a 100-point scale. Last year, or we did our last evaluation in 2016. I think we were at 70, almost 73 points out of 100, which made it to be a class 2. Okay, Jacob? This gives you an idea of the number of hours from last year to this year. Obviously, we had a lot more time for training for a number of reasons. One of the things that we did is we instituted a new training platform, an online training platform that enabled our people to take multiple classes. We were able to convert Station 1 and Station 2 to virtual learning, just like everyone else more or less had to. We were planning on doing that at one time. We went ahead and did it early, or late last year, early 2020, which turned out to be a blessing in disguise, as a matter of fact, because it enabled us to not have to get together in large groups to maintain our training hours. And again, those will be the hours that they're going to be looking at when they come. They'll audit those hours and see what we've done with that. So, Jacob? These are staffing levels. I think I put this in there two years ago for you. In 2004 versus 2021, we maintained level staffing, and if you go across, you can literally see why some of that has changed. As in, in 2004, there were a couple of different engines that had four people, which is the national standard. In 2013, we put the fourth EMS unit on, took those two people. Man, the fourth ambulance without adding any additional personnel, and this is just how it plays out every day. Over there on the right, you'll see Engine 1 will have three personnel, the rescue and the ladder, three. Each ambulance has two personnel, even all the way down to our battalion chief and our medical officer. And then eight to five staff is over there to, so minimum to man every single piece of equipment is 25 persons per 24-hour shift. Okay, Jacob? Challenges for 2021. Looking forward, relocation to Station 4. Again, I think most of the members without, I think Commissioner France was not on the commission then. We did a study session at Station 4. I think in 2018, I'm almost sure it was October 2018, and showed you, and you can imagine what happened with the social distancing difficulties, challenges we had this year, as small as that station was. That's still a challenge for us for equipment-wise, and it was very prominent this year with COVID. We hope that that can be upped a little bit to the unfunded or in some format. It's been on the plan since 2012. Increase of 911 emergency responses, inter-facility transfers, even though they were down this year, we still usually anticipate and historically have been about a 3% to 4%, maybe 5% increase every year. One of the things we're seeing now, despite being the fact that we are at full staffing, is a shortage of paramedics, and that's a nationwide issue right now. We're seeing a declining number of applicants that want to get into the fire service, and especially, we, most of our paramedics, currently, we have three in class, so we've kind of turned inward and grown our own. One will finish up in June. Two will be done early 2022. We use Hutchison Community College as our paramedic school. They indicate to us they usually see anywhere but pre-COVID, 24 to 26 per class. Now, they're lucky to get 10 in a class. So this is a problem across the country of trying to get quality applicants here. I've talked to city manager. We've come up with recruiting, hopefully, some things that we could possibly help out in that. Station alerting. You may have seen this before. It's been on the sub-CIP list since 2018. Basically, it's to decrease call processing times, is to automate the actual alarm system from 911 dispatch to how we receive our alarms and how we are dispatched. That's basically, there's technology out there that would increase that process. We do notice a lot of times that the front end is where we see not actually a delay, but the most difficulty when the calls are coming in and the call processing time from the 911 side. If we went to an automated system, that would increase that tremendously. We still try to get first responders, a minimum of five minutes on scene from time of call to what we call wheel stop to actually at the scene. And we are, we are under that right now. We're hitting it better than 90%, and we think we can do better on that. Facility maintenance. Overall, I know the city's addressed this in many, many formats. Parks and everyone else, we're no different. I looked it up today. Station 1 is 71 years old. Station 2 is 69 years old. Station 3 is 38 years old, and Station 4 is 53 years old. So we all know that, just like a house, things need to be maintained and taken care of, and that's just an issue that we're no different. Our facilities might get used a little bit different due to the fact that we have kitchens and bunk rooms and quote "actual living facilities," more toilets, more showers, things like that, that get used on a daily basis versus maybe some of the other city facilities, but we're seeing an increase in our maintenance on those. Employee cancer prevention, also health and wellness. We've made some Uh, we've made some strides in that this uh, past year, and we're continuing to move. One of the things we've done is we've uh, we now have heavy-duty, we call them extractors, they're nothing more than, than heavy-duty machine, uh, washing machines for turnout gear, our fire gear. And we have them in three out of the four stations now, so the gear can be laundered uh, appropriately by manufacturer specifications. And we've also have introduced and, and installed air purifying systems in all of our ambulances now. And again, COVID pushed that, but it's also for, we're going to see how that goes on the ambulances for now. And my intention is to probably move forward and, and, and actually do that uh, for the fire apparatus too, in the cabs. Um, a lot of the studies are, are, are showing that the firefighters respond to a fire, do the work. Uh, even though we do what we call gross decon, we kind of hose, hose, hose them off before they come back to the station, just sitting in the cab on the way back in that, in their uh, their turnout gear kind of off gas to a point that uh, the breathing, we, we've already seen, I think I sent a C I M out a while back about the cancer, certain types of cancer. Uh, firefighters are seeing a three and four times more likely to, to acquire due to all the, the different types of chemicals and, and combustion that they're around. The last thing is the review uh, of our value of continuing our, our accreditation. Um, we'd like to move more to an outcome-based organization. Uh, and we've just looked at recently, looking, looking at the, the expense of this, of, of continuing accreditation and, and seeing what the benefits, whether they justify the means. Um, we already do best practices, we can already perform best practices. And we not do up for accreditation again till twenty-twenty-three, so we have plenty of time. We did, one of the things that prompted this is, is the amount of time it's starting to take on our staff to document. A lot of the uh, departments that have accreditation have a full-time person dedicated to it. And another thing is, is just getting uh, it's getting costly. We looked at, looked at it from a cost perspective, um, what are we really getting out of it? Uh, we, we, are we seeing anything operationally that we can't already be doing? Um, one other factor in that is we do, and we do several things that we don't get any credit for uh, in accreditation, that no one else does. Um, so those are the, the issues on that. But those are just some um, challenges that we're looking ahead for, for uh, this coming year, I guess we're already in twenty-one. And as we move forward. So with that, I'd be glad to take any questions you may have on anything you've seen or want to know about.
Questions from the commissioner, Commissioner Davis.
Yeah, Chief, as far as the inter-facility transfers, uh, I, I've heard comments from, I'll just say, different sides of the aisle, uh, that it's a profitable business. But then I hear the answer, that is, yeah, if we had personnel to take these folks at the drop of a hat. Uh, i- has there been any consideration of establishing a separate ambulance transfer service either under the direction of a hospital or a private company, if, if, if manpower is our major limiting?
Right, uh, we're continuing to have discussions with, with hos- with the hospital on that. I know Chief Mulligan attempted to perf- to create, when he was here, a part-time type on-call uh, program to address that. But the fact that, number one, they're so unpredictable is, is this the driving factor. Another driving factor is to find qualified critical care paramedics in our location that are not already working for us and would do that whenever they needed to be called in in the middle of the night or so forth. Another thing we are op- we are, uh, and it was one of the, I don't know if you remember, it was one of the recommendations from Harold Cohen and TriData when they did the EMS study, is to continuously uh, look at our transfer policy. And right now Chief Pearson i- is getting with the hospital, and we, we're reviewing it with them constantly. It, it's, it would be nice to be able to schedule that, it's just, it, it's, it's, it's got a lot of, lot of different moving parts, it's very, very difficult. Uh, on the hospital side, yeah, it would be, it would be uh, very expensive for them to have, to maintain their own transport. Um, you know, we're, we're, I've said this once, I'll say it again, we're kind of an island. Uh, Newton is, is much like us, but they have thirty, forty-five minute turnarounds in Wichita. Uh, Lawrence, thirty minutes to Kansas City. Our, our one-time turnaround to Kansas City for a transfer is almost seven and a half hours. And depend, and that's depending on what time of the day it is, if you don't get caught up in traffic. Wichita transfers easily three and a half to four hours. So, um, that, that's all I'm going.
Yeah, Chief did a good job of covering it. I, I would add, I have been in some conversations about an alternate uh, provider, and, and the hospital's very complimentary of, of our staff, our equipment and our training. And so there seems to be a preference for our department, and it, it really just becomes a scheduling and a workload challenge for all of us.
It was, at, at one time, there was a, a private transfer company in town who took some of the load. Are they still in business, or has that gone, gone defunct?
They are, they are still here. Life Touch is still here. Uh, they, uh, more, theirs is more of a scheduling. It's, it's ran by just a, a, a wife and a husband, so they, they just don't have the people to be on-call twenty-four-seven.
Okay, so they do scheduled stuff uh, as they can?
As they can, right.
Okay.
Are they, are they contracted with preferentially through the hospital? Meaning, does the hospital contact them in the event of a transfer? Are they contacted first to maybe ease some of the load on, on us providing those transfers?
I don't believe they have, I don't know if there is an actual calling tree or what their policy, the hospital's policy is. My, my understanding is the hospital usually calls us first. And if we can't do it, then they do make arrangements with either another agency or organization, whether it's uh, out of Wichita. There have been times when other EMS organizations will come here and perform a transfer.
Chief, you talked a little bit about inspections. Now, I know we do inspections, fire inspections on new properties, is that correct? When the properties are being constructed?
Right, we do plan reviews and, and yeah, there is part of the inspection process as it moves through to uh, certificate of occupancy, yes.
Okay, then do we also do inspections of businesses and so on throughout the year, uh, when they're up and operating? And how often does that happen?
That's annually, we do that annually. Uh, we're gonna probably have to make a little bit of arrangements now. One of the people that used to do that was a part-time uh, person named Roger Newell, some of you may remember Roger. He did a great job for us. Uh, he retired, I think after thirty, thirty-five years on the fire department, then worked another five or ten for us. He finally decided to retire again, so we're going to have to look for replacement of Roger. Roger got a lot of those done.
Now, we, it's my understanding, we, is there a charge for doing that, or is that something we just do as a way of supporting the businesses?
Uh, no, there's no charge. We do not charge the, we do not charge that. We don't have any type of a business license or, or systems license.
Right, so I, you know, that's, that's a benefit, I think, that most people probably don't think of is that when they visit a business, they know that the fire department's been there sometime in the not-too-distant past and has at least reviewed the systems and made sure that they were uh, up to speed on requirements and so on.
Absolutely, and, and to that uh, matter, Commissioner France, we have not really had a, a major commercial structure fire here in a, a, a long time. In fact, if you go in by incident or you're going by damage, we had a, a, a small fire at roadway end last year, which caused the most damage of any fire we've had. And we didn't even put it out, the sprinkler system put it out, it was all water damage, so it, it did its job. Uh, but commercial fire safety is, uh, and that's to- in my opinion, that's totally uh, due to the efforts of, of uh, Troy Long and the Fire Marshal's Office, and Roger, when he was out doing it, Roger would do easily sixteen to seventeen hundred inspections a year for us, working part-time.
Chief touched on Compliance Engine a little while ago, and if you recall when, the, the report from when we made that transition, in addition to the inspections that you're talking about, there's a code obligation that the owners have their systems recharged and have hood suppression systems and certain things inspected on a, on a regular schedule by a licensed contractor. And so uh, inspection staff was following up on that, and they had a difficult time both in terms of licensed contractors and just staying on top of contractors and businesses to meet those deadlines. Compliance Engine automated a lot of that, said, made standardized the communication. And as Chief mentioned earlier, for anyone to be able to enter information into that system, they had to be a licensed contractor. So it, it really improved the efficiency of our inspections uh, department by getting us consistency in, in terms of the communication and follow-up and, and getting licensed contractors straightened out. So it was a huge improvement.
And, and that's another reason for the, the commercial fire, the, the commercial businesses that do have commercial fire protection systems. We now know through Compliance Engine, because they're scheduled on their own, we, we're not involved in that. We're only involved when they have a, a, a problem. We know they're getting done. Uh, restaurants require their hood system to be done twice a year. And I can guarantee you, there were restaurants, and we, just because of our manpower, us not getting to them, we weren't being able to get to them twice a year, we'd like to get to them once a year. Now that option's not there, and that's, that's what I was saying, that I, we've seen a decrease in, in false or in mech- uh, mechanical alarm systems coming in as fire alarms from last year to this year. It's solely, in my opinion, because of the Compliance Engine. Uh, they're being held accountable, the, the businesses are.
And, and not to belabor the point, but we went from a paper notification tracking system to a shared database where the contractors are now logging that they did the inspection, what their inspection findings are in that database, and then our inspection staff can monitor that data versus tra- tra- you know, um, trying to chase all that data. Anything else?
Um, I think I've got, I've, I've got a couple unless Commissioner Hoppe or Commissioner Ryan has something that they, that they would like to ask.
Nothing here.
I, I just had one quick question, and you mentioned how we had gone to out-of-state to North Carolina. Is that just a courtesy thing we do, or is there some type of reimbursement on those? I was always curious.
That particular one was, uh, one of our Swiftwater people, it was a, a task force that was assembled by the state of Kansas. And we were reimbursed by FEMA for that. Uh, Troy and Hoke went as a K-nine team, and one of our Swiftwater people went. Um, unfortunately, or fortunately, however you want to look at it, they, they got all the way down there and they really didn't do a whole lot except stay in staging and, and were returned. But yeah, that was a national declared emergency, um, and FEMA did reimburse our personnel for that. Anytime we would leave the state, it would only be under uh, the direction of the state fire marshal. The, the regional ones I talked about earlier, we, for the, we, we can be called anywhere in the state with that. And that's basically a mutual aid situation. But if we leave out of the state, it's usually a federal-type situation, and FEMA is required and is reimbursed.
Hmm, thank you.
Yep.
All right, I had a couple of questions. I just want to confirm that all fire department personnel at this point have been vaccinated for COVID?
When you say all, not one-hundred percent of our members have, but anyone that, that we offered it to has.
Okay.
And that last number, I think that was at thirty-five or thirty-six have, have taken us up and have gone through both, yeah, both our shots. All of it, we're completely finished for now.
So the opportunity's been extended to all, about thirty-five percent have actually taken them up on it.
Gotcha, and so we can now, um, well, hopefully respond without the, quite the degree of worry that um, our personnel are going to be infected. Did you get thirty-five percent? That just seems incredibly low for medical responders. Is there any, any indications why we aren't at a higher um, compliance rate on our, our vaccinations?
But you know, offer is it's consistent with what we're seeing uh, nationwide uh, response for departments. I mean, there's examples out of Los Angeles and elsewhere that have about the same response rate. But Chief, you may know some specifics.
I asked specifically on some of that, uh, we're, we're fairly new, y- I said, not new, but young department. We've had a lot of younger, healthy people come on, and some of the answers I have heard were, you know, I, I, I'm young. I, I follow the P P E on calls, I, 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 I do what I'm supposed to do when I'm off the job, I'm healthy. I just don't, and then we do have some people who, again, have, have, have express interest on the speed of the vaccine that was, that was developed. Uh, they're just kind of, kind of on the fence. First round, we, I think we only had twenty-nine, so seven, seven more people came around afterwards, after kind of, I don't know if it's peer pressure or they did some more research, but seven more of them came around after the first wave of ours and, and went through it, so hopefully they'll start trickling, trickling in.
Um, I, I, I would hope so. I worry about asymptomatic carriers um, from the point of view of the people that we are taking care of. And I know that they're taking precautions with their P P E, but um, there's, I think there's some value in acknowledging that you're also extending that protection to the people that we're serving. Um, it's not just solely based on what's best um, for me and what I want to do. Second question is, you had mentioned ISO accreditation and then also C F A I. And I was just wondering, are those, do they accredit different parts of this, of the fire department? Or different accreditation agencies?
No, and that, that was kind of our frustration with the C F A, and that's Center for Fire Accreditation International. Uh, that's kind of our frustration with them a little bit is that this had, being accredited has nothing to do with your ISO rating, you don't get any credit, there, there's no connection there.
The ISO is the rating itself, okay.
Yeah, ISO is the insurance services organization, that's what determines uh, your insurance premiums throughout the community.
Right, that's coming back to me now. It's been, it's been a few months since we had those.
Yeah, they're, they're two separate organizations. Another thing on the accreditation too, is since we, since as you saw, eighty-seven percent of our, our work is EMS. EMS is a very, very small component of that, they're more fire-related accreditation-type situations.
Thank you, and then my final question is, um, I know over the last several months, actually kind of harking back to that whole ISO um, conversation that we had months ago, have we completed um, the inventory of subdivision emergency access roads and an inventory of their maintenance status and usability status?
That's actually more of a development services item, but they have completed that inventory. I don't, I, I know they're in communication with the Fire Marshal's Office about the maintenance status, but they've gone back and inventoried all the instances of um, you know, individual entrances, and then also looked at the code that was in effect at that time, the approvals that were in effect at that time. And then I've asked them to go back and look at maintenance requirements and confirm that uh, if there's any maintenance to be done, that we take that up.
Thank you.
You.
Anyone else? And I don't think that we have any, well, I guess there is one member, um, possibly the, from the public, or at least a name that I'm not recognizing right off the bat. Um, if there's any questions from, or comments from the public, if you could raise your, your virtual hand or um, activate your video and raise your physical hand, um, I'd be happy to allow you to ask a question if you have one. Is there any member of the public? Well, if um, nobody else has anything, I thank you very much for your presentation, Chief Royce, and um, uh, really, really appreciate uh, getting the updated figures. And it's also nice to know that we have um, a software platform that's going to give us more accurate numbers than the cobbled-together numbers that, that we've had to make do with in the past, so.
Absolutely, just, just real quickly, just looking at those numbers, we had, with only five people actually coming down with it, we, we transported close to three hundred patients that were suspected and over fifty that were known when we, when we arrived. So there was quite the possibility of exposure. And there were, there were several times when we, we would transport a patient not knowing, and then they would test positive later. The hospital would get back with us, or we, the, the receiving agency. But we never, on the, on the transfers, we never really, if, if it was life-threatening, we took it no matter what, uh, that was not an issue.
Thank you, thank you for, and please thank all your personnel for their service during, well, an ongoing endemic, and we're very grateful that we can rely on you not only to transport us to some line of regional, but also within the state.
Thank you for your time.
All right, well, if no one has anything else, um I'll see you back here in about ten minutes.